It is July 21st, 2015. Board of Education Workshop Regular Meeting Agenda. Please silence or turn off your cellphones and note the locations of the emergency exits, please. If we could just have a moment of silence for those staff members and families that may have lost a loved one recently. And if we could stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all districts, schools, the Herald News, The Trends, The Record, Aim West Milford, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cable Vision of Warwick, and posted in the Administration Building with a copy in the district's monitoring files. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, please, Mrs. Francisco.
Mr. Babbitt?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Dever?
Mr. Drew?
Here.
Mr. Foodie?
President.
Mrs. Keefe?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Robbins?
Mrs. Schultz?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve Executive's Resolution?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolution, resolve that the board go into executive session approximately 9:00 PM for the purpose of discussing negotiations, student matters, personnel, HIBs, the up-agreed Woodlake School Principal Position, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Rashika, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, so it's summertime and there are lots of things going on. Construction work, we have boilers being replaced in this building along with some other projects, and roofing work throughout the district. And at the high school, we have the science labs are making progress, they're all rooms are gutted out and things are taking place every day, which is good. Want to also report that in this, tonight's meeting, you'll be looking at something to approve other work to be done over the course of the summer, so it's very, very busy, most of the buildings, things are going on. And speaking of things going on, as far as educationally, we have the ESY program, the Extended School Year Program, taking place here at Westbrook and also at Maple Road School. And we have approximately, I think there's between 50 and 60 students in that program. And then there's the literacy program, which is also at about 70 students that are participating in that, taking up, I just found out, about four classrooms, okay, so that's going on. And tomorrow night, there is a parent literacy night, so they can come in and visit and get an opportunity to not only see their children at work and work with the children, but I understand there will be quite a spread before that even happens, so that's good. So you're invited to that. As I understand it, there is a RSVP list of approximately 120 people at this time, so that's excellent, and we're happy to see that. As far as my work over the summer, it's trying to replace and interview teachers for various positions and looking at our administrative openings, and of course, I'm working on many of the issues that came about during the course of the year, trying to resolve issues and make some changes, always working on making West Milford a better place to be. So that's where we are.
Thank you. Special reports and correspondence. Mrs. Francisco?
Yes, I have the minutes here for you to review and consider. I noticed that June 16th, 2015, the Staff Recognition Special Action and the executive session minutes from the June 16th meeting are not listed, but they were also included. So there will be four sets of minutes, four sets of minutes for consideration. Also, I'd like to call your attention to page 26 of the June 23rd minutes. There's a correction from the ones that were sent to everyone. That was for the motion to reconsider the donation at the high school. Mrs. O'Brien voted no, and we had listed as voting yes, so we did make that correction. I don't have copies for everyone, but I'd like to have the minutes with that correction minute. So that was page 26.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. So I need somebody to move the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following minutes. Now, would that be the workshop special action of June 16?
Yeah.
Oh, Stat Recognition, Recognition, June 16, 2015. Executive Session, June 2000, June 16, 2015. Workshop Special Action Meeting of June 23rd, 2015, and Executive Session of June 23rd.
Need?
As amended.
Need a second? Thank you, Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain from the minutes from June 16th, since I was not there. Otherwise, yes to the rest.
Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome.
President's Report. I would just like to mention that at the reorg meeting, there was a team charter. We've had this team charter for quite a while, it kind of states the rules of board members' courtesy, respect, that type of thing. And we need to sign it, so I thought maybe next month, when everyone is here, we could probably pass it around and have everybody sign it. It wasn't our packet, so if you need another copy of it, let me know, I can have it.
You're looking at me, I'm not signing.
No, I'm just looking. I'm trying to look at everybody.
I don't remember.
It did come in our packet at the reorg meeting, but if you need a copy of it, let me know.
I remember.
And you can read it.
We did borrow it.
But it wasn't signed.
Yeah, I believe that in the board packet, there was a copy of what the team charter was developed to be. We have the correction that we, or the change that was made during the June 23rd meeting. They corrected one of the areas, I think, I believe they added M-Policy to it.
Oh, yeah, the January 23rd meeting.
So the one that's going to be distributed next month for signature will include that change.
I received a letter in the mail. It's actually old news, but it's such good news, I'm just going to repeat it and read it to everybody. It came from Character.org. It says, "On behalf of all of us at TheCharacter.org, I want to make sure the school board of West Milford Township Schools is aware of the high honor bestowed on McAppen Middle School as they were named a 2015 National School of Character. It takes a lot of work to meet the high standards to receive this designation. Schools had to coordinate with all stakeholders to reflect on how well they met the standards of our 11 Principles of Effective Character Education. They also had to assemble an impressive online portfolio of evidence to showcase their achievements. In addition, schools received a school site visit or careful review from our trained evaluations. Only a small number received the national certification. This year, we honored 64 schools in three districts across the country. We notified the schools in May and hoped that they had some time to celebrate their well-earned achievement. We want to ensure that the school board was aware of this significant honor as well. You should be justly proud of McAppen Middle School. We hope that the schools are now making plans to attend the National Forum on Character Education in October, where we will honor them more fully and present them with a display banner to hang at their school and an award certificate. Schools will also receive some copies of the Schools of Character magazine in which they will be featured." Then it goes on to talk about how national schools and districts of character, they're encouraged to reach out to other schools to help them learn about the power of effective character education, and that schools of character should be in every community throughout the United States, and to help you appreciate the power of effective character education, I'm enclosing an infographic of the data from the 2015 schools. As well, you know, character and academics are not an either-or proposition. Our kids need and deserve both. Our goal in education is to, after all, create both smart and good students, and national schools of character like yours are our greatest success stories. Thank you and congratulations." And this came from Becky Sippos, President and CEO of Character.org. That concludes my President's Report. So I need a motion to approve...
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented this week.
Do we need a second and then change them, or just as?
Second, and then we'll change.
Yes.
Yeah, Tony, Danny, can you?
I'll just...
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it now.
Thank you.
If we look at, under Personnel, Student Affairs, number 14, under that section, number one, we're going to pull that motion off the agenda. That's on page 13, on the bottom, and that will, topic will be discussed in executive session.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's also a correction on page 16, Resolution Number 17.
Seventeen, yes.
That's a .5 position, not a .6, and so the salary would be $26,960.
What number again, please?
Seventeen.
Number 17 on page 16.
Oh, it says it already.
It says .5, but it's...
It was changed, yeah, it was changed to .5, the salary, originally it was on as a .6. It's a .5 position, changed to a .5, but the salary was not reflected.
Oh, the salary isn't correct.
$26,960.
Okay, thank you.
Guess that's it with the changes or corrections. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting the agenda with those amended?
With the corrections.
With the corrections.
With the correction, and the hand carries?
And the hand carries. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the 30-minute period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Would anybody like to speak?
Seeing none, move to close petitions and requests.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. There are... One through 12, yeah, okay. I would like to move items under Education, one through 12. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Drew?
Item number nine, is that tuition number given there? The total for the 19 students, is that the amount per student?
Any other questions or discussion with regards to one through 12? Yes?
On number nine, I don't have my notes because I left my packet because of these principal interviews, but Mr. Drew reminded me, why is there such a big difference between New Beginning Annex at Maple Road and the Course Per Student and the New Beginning Annex at actual schools?
They're different programs.
Okay.
The actual school program is actually a transition program for the students that age out at Maple Road, and then they have to go into something else before they go into the second class. So it's a transitional-type program.
Anybody else, discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Item number 13 will be, the vote will be taken after executive session. Budget and Finance?
I'd like to move items number one through 32, under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Foodie?
Item number five, to approve the cancellation of an annual maintenance support agreement, are we replacing that with anything?
Yeah, apparently CC Productions was a middleman, so Data Business Systems is the actual owner of the program.
Okay.
And so the contract that we approved for CC Productions was actually a little bit more money than the one that we received from Data Business Systems, because they're going to be, it's going to be direct with the owner, the vendor.
Approximately, how much did we save, do you know?
I think it was a little, a couple hundred dollars.
Okay.
It was minimal, but it was still savings.
I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Hopefully, I'll be quick here. Item number 10, I'm wondering what that is, that we're spending. This is a Transfinder?
It's our program for routing for buses.
Interesting, okay.
So it's an online program, so we have annual maintenance agreement.
Efficient route. Eleven, what is that?
Tyler Technologies does our, a different program, the tracking of the maintenance of the vehicles for Department of Transportation inspections. We have to track all of the parts they can put in when they're serviced, and the tracker software, that is the Fleet Vision software, and Tyler Technologies is much more comprehensive than the one offered through TransFinder, so we have two different systems based upon the needs of the department.
Item number 12, there's some fairly large amounts there. Were those put out for bid?
Morris County Co-op is a cooperative that we're part of.
Okay, so you just went through the, okay, that's fine.
Yes, we discussed it in Budget and Finance.
Thank you.
Mr. Foodie, thank you.
Question and then a suggestion. Number one, new cable runs district-wide?
We talked about that in Budget and Finance. This is through E-Rate.
Okay.
Remember, we had gotten the E-Rate funding approved.
Yep. And number 27, to approve the transfer of interest from payroll agency, agency medical and capital projects, any amount of $29,5756 to the general fund account of last year's general fund.
For the year that just ended, June 30th?
Yeah, which is last year, June, ending June 30th.
Right, yeah. 2014, 15.
I'll throw this out there, and I don't know if we can amend this now, but I know that there was quite a hoopla about the transfer of monies into our capital reserve, and it was well below what the district was looking for. Could we move that money into capital reserve?
No, the only time you can move money into capital reserve is...
Oh, that's right, you're right, before June 20th, that's right. Never mind.
Yeah.
Yep, as soon as you started saying that, it started clicking.
Thank you for that thought, though. Any other questions or discussion?
We're going through 32?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yes, I did have.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I did have a couple more questions, I didn't realize it was on that one. In 26, Certified Physician, 175 an exam.
We're required, the Department of Transportation implemented a program where any physician that does the required medical examinations for the renewal of the CDL license has to be DOT-approved, and Dr. G. is, and it's not covered by health insurance because it's an employment exam.
Yeah.
So we've made arrangements with Dr. G., we would have to pay anyway, and so we've made arrangements with Dr. G. for this amount, the 175 per exam. We usually have maybe around 10 a year that need to be done.
28, Training and Travel, Annual Meeting International, where are you going, and how much are we expecting?
It's in the, within your information, it's a conference in Two Texas.
Okay, so it won't be a fortune, I want to make sure it wasn't Riviera or something.
No.
They'd have to make one for school board members. They'd have to make one for school board members.
I'm going to need powers.
Okay, opposed part, wish you were here.
Any other questions or discussion?
I have one more. On number 24, National Joint Powers Alliance, I don't ever remember seeing this in the past, is this something new?
No, we've been part of this group for a few years, and when we purchased the playground equipment at UGL and Maple Road, when we implemented the pre-K program a couple of years ago, we used their cooperative pricing, we saved a significant amount of money. And there's also a resolution where we're accepting a donation from actual school, PTA, for their playground equipment, and we used the same purchasing cooperative, and they were able to save a couple thousand dollars.
Okay. I'm so sorry, I've got one other question.
Yes, Mr. Drew?
Eighteen and nineteen, including 4% administrative fees for working together with another group, and I assume we're paying them for that?
Yeah, Ed Services Commission, whenever we have contracts, ED Services Commission, they have an administrative fee that they charge us.
Why don't we charge them a 5% board-considerating fee for our time? I just, you know, for splitting it with somebody, I don't know why we're paying them extra.
Close supply and demand, they have something that we need.
Uh-huh.
Economics, one of them.
Quiz next week.
Hi.
That's it for me, I'm so sorry.
All right. Mr. Foodie?
You're, any more questions?
No.
She wasn't sure, your hand was...
Oh, no, I was rubbing it back on the neck, sorry.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Foodie?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 33, under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Drew?
Can we vote on reimbursing our own expenses?
You would abstain for yourself and vote how you would vote for the others.
It's listed that way, so it could be marked off as abstaining for yourself. You would abstain on your own.
I was just sort of thinking, if everybody has to abstain, we can't approve. Yes, you could. I'm going to vote for you to abstain. No, you can, you just can call, I did it in the past because there was some confusion.
Roll call?
Mr. Babbitt?
Two individuals.
Abstain for self, yes to all others.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Abstain for myself and yes to all.
Mr. Foodie?
Abstain for myself and yes for others.
Ms. O'Brien?
Abstain for myself and yes for others.
Mrs. Schultz?
Abstain for myself and yes for others.
I'd like to move item number 34, under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Roll call?
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie? Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Excuse me.
Mr. Wilson failed, there's only five people that voted, yes.
It's a majority, it's a form for that.
No, the motion, you only get four, Ashley, so it's a...
Okay, oh, sorry.
I'd like to move item number 35, under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 36, under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
No.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Drew? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 37, under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 38, under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Drew?
Just want to clear this up, that we're finally buying those Spanish to textbooks that have been made too much of.
Those little ones.
Yes, supervisor's transferring money from her instructional play account.
Roll call.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Sorry, you have a question?
Is there a question?
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
As you know, I normally don't vote for transfers, but under the circumstances, it's for textbooks for the children and the protection of the building with the lightning alert system, so I'm voting yes, and you have your two-thirds. You were anticipating Barbara, I wasn't.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I was actually, if Mrs. O'Brien didn't point it out, I was going to point out that this found a textbook.
I'd like to move item number 39, under Budget and Finance, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Abstain.
Mr. Drew?
Somebody tell me what this is, I don't have it.
As you know, we're looking to do a referendum for the roofs, and in order to start the process, we have to submit the project information to the Department of Education, and this is the resolution authorizing us to do the submission.
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz? Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Personnel, Student Affairs.
Okay, item one is pulled, so we're going to skip item one, we're going to go to item two. I'd like to make a motion to vote on item two.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Foodie?
That includes allowance that was moved into the salary?
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Abstain.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Gladly, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I'd like to move items number three.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Bailey?
I want to back up in address number two. Barbara, congratulations, and the person who has this job in West Milford, and at this point, it's you, you know, it's really a phenomenal thing what goes on here, because if you compare Barbara's salary and those that have come before her, the people in the same position scattered throughout neighboring counties, specifically heading east, it's really phenomenal how much lower your salary is than some of your colleagues. I'm not mentioning names, it's not the point. It's not the point I'm trying to make. God bless those guys and girls over that way. What I am saying is that we get a tremendous bang for a buck here in West Milford, as always, with all our administrators and all our staff. And it's especially noteworthy to single out and pay respect and compliment the people that are in the middle of the everyday activity in our central office. And whether it's the superintendent, the DA, or the new director of education, I just want the record noted, because I don't think enough gets said, thank you on behalf of myself and I'm sure on many citizens here in town for what goes in on a day-in, day-out basis at a rather discounted rate. How about that? Done.
You trying to encourage?
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Excuse me?
To Bergen County? Don't do that. They pay much lower over there.
Any other comments, questions? I believe we're on number three.
Yes.
Roll call. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Would like to move items number four through thirty-five under personnel.
Mr. Bailey?
I'm waiting for the results of the vote, then I'm going to work backwards because I'm very nervous, shall we say. So, going backwards, I want to congratulate Mr. Novak on his ascension into this position, which is a very important position and often times serves as a stepping stone over my career. I've seen several people move from your position into his position. Let's not get ahead of ourselves.
Not so fast.
I don't know what your aspirations are. But I know one thing, you're a West Milford person, you're well-suited for this job, and you live, breathe, and every move you make takes into account what's the best for the staff and the students and everybody else who has a vested interest in the West Milford Education Association. So, having sat here for a long time, many people are aware of my position, that I love to see these types of situations where Novak, a West Milford person, who came through this system, who went out and got educated, and, you know, put together this resume and assumed these positions and performed admirably, is now in this position. So, I wish you well. I congratulate you, and you'll always have my support as have your predecessors. So, congratulations, Mr. Novak.
Thank you.
And I hope nothing but the best for you.
Can I get a second, please? Thank you. I need a second for items four through thirty-five under personnel.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Drew?
Since we're doing these all together, I'm wondering where we're voting to accept a resignation, there's at least one of these, item number five, resignation of Lee Turkowski that I'm really disappointed to see. What if we vote against that? What?
Oh, well.
It doesn't make any difference.
It doesn't make a difference. You can't force somebody to stay. But there are some situations where voting yes does benefit both parties, so timing-wise and things like that.
I'm just really unhappy to see that.
But if you did vote no, it really has no legal effect.
All right. I also note in looking through these that in most cases we are replacing somebody, and of course it's always unfortunate to have to do that kind of thing. The new positions are item fifteen and item eighteen. And I can't help but notice that in new positions, we don't have anybody doing classroom instruction, that these are, those are the only two new positions that I see. And they are effectively additions to...
It's addition to the special education programs.
Both of them?
Yes. So, both of these positions, one's from multiple disabilities, and the other one would be a social worker, which would also help general population as well. But it's based on the fact that we are starting those programs where we're having students stay, trying to get more students to stay in district. So this was one of the pieces we had discussed, is that we're going to have to get some positions filled in order to support the new programs. But on the other end, we'll reduce the number of tuitions that we're paying out of district.
So this is it right here, when Dr. Bruden had discussed, these are those particular positions.
Those positions that we were looking at, absolutely.
And we hope that by doing this, that our costs...
Will finish.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, roll call. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to go to hand carries, Deblu shee. I'd like to move items number thirty-six to thirty-eight, please.
Second.
Thirty? Thirty-six will be in executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry, so we're pulling thirty-six, too?
After executive session, it will be thirty-six.
Thirty-six is after executive session. Okay, I am sorry, let's try this again. I'd like to move items number thirty-seven, thirty-eight under personnel.
Need a second.
Second.
Kevin Babbitt, thank you. Discussion.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
Roll call. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
That concludes personnel, student affairs.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Drew?
I know, there isn't an item on the agenda, but there's one other thing I kind of forgot here. We're paying a premium to some bus drivers for perfect attendance. And I think that should be noted. I'm happy to pay that, because I know when we go get substitutes and other people, that, you know, that costs us additional money, and it's disruptive, and it takes people time. And so our bus drivers who have perfect attendance, you know, thank you.
They have to be commended, you're right.
Thank you. They know who they are, I'm not going to read these six names, but...
Thank you, Mr. Drew. Okay, safety. Mr. Foodie, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Brien, do you have anything to report for state county school boards?
Not at this time, thank you.
New Jersey school boards, Mr. Foodie, anything to report?
No, but I just want to go back if I can to safety, because there was something I read over the weekend in Paquonik. They were doing a roof project and...
No permit.
No permit. And it made me think back to 2011, when I suggested that we get permits for all projects. And we worked out a policy, but it eventually, it didn't get adopted. But I'm just glad to see that, because it made me wonder if we had all our permits for what we're doing, and we do. And I'm just glad to see that we have them. So I just, I would like to add that.
Thank you. Do you have anything for New Jersey schools?
No, no, I don't. No, I don't.
Thank you. Mr. Drew, legislative?
Yes, I'm not going to take a huge amount of time. The New Jersey Department of Education has released their effectiveness numbers for teachers and principals for the year 2013 to 2014 by district and school. So these are not the overall numbers. I've kind of looked at these, and frankly, they're raw. Tell, you know, I haven't added them up to say, are we doing better, are we doing worse, are we, you know, any of that kind of thing. But those numbers are out there, you can Google it, anybody who wants to look at it. You know, it seems like the measurements that we have show that our teachers are effective and highly effective.
Right, highly effective.
Actually, here. Really, thank you. We're doing great with that. Among things that have happened, it seems like they've slowed down a little bit in the legislature. But one that has been passed by both houses requires, school business administrator, you probably know about this, Ms. Francisco, requires school business administrators to annually report to its Board of Education on district contracts. I'm not quite exactly sure what that means, but...
There was, in your board members-only area, there was a listing of all of our professional contracts for your review.
Okay.
I believe that next year I have to put it on the...
I wasn't saying, gee, where is it? I was just pointing out that that was something like that.
You have to put all the professional contracts together in the document.
The New Jersey Legislature has established measures to deter steroid use among students, and it appropriates a whopping $45,000 across the entire state of New Jersey to administer that program. And I can't even begin to imagine how $45,000 would address that. It just, who knows what they're thinking? For those who just really enjoy watching the circus, the US Congress is considering amendments that would prevent any federal education mandates regarding curriculum, such as Common Core, and in exchange for federal dollars. So that's a, it's just a humorous discussion. Governor Chris Christie announced last month that New Jersey was backing away from the Common Core state standards. He said that the reason was that we were simply, that they were simply not working, quote, "simply not working." His administration yesterday, this was last week, unveiled a wide-ranging plan for reviewing the existing standards. It calls for listening tours, focus groups, an online survey, and nearly a dozen meetings of four separate committees and subcommittees totaling 98 members in all. And I just can't help but wonder that after only two years, how we could possibly evaluate the effectiveness of a program? And I guess if you're running for higher office, you are granted some kind of divine wisdom. As far as I can tell, and I prefer not really to comment on these kinds of things, but I'm going to anyhow, park, the park testing was not normed to previous years. So for example, we didn't do something where a little girl scored this on the ASPE and the same little girl scored this on the PARK, so that we would have some kind of ability to say that this kind of score in English on the old test is this kind of score in English on the PARK, so that if they go up or down, or whatever they're reported as, we would know whether we made progress or didn't make progress, or whatever. So without that kind of norming, you get numbers and might as well be numbers out of a hat. We know that the test was not suitable for many students with disabilities, given the way it was administered, on computers, no particular accommodation for various kinds of impairment. The tests were given to young children on computers where the children may have never seen a computer before. I know that West Milford went to considerable trouble to introduce our students to computers before we did it. But it's still, there are kids who are familiar with computers and kids who aren't familiar with computers. The tests required substantial extra cost and staff on our part. We had to go hire substitutes to come in and took away a considerable amount of class time. Across the state, the number reported for students opting out of the test was, I think, around 45%. Somebody may know the exact number, but it wasn't some little number, it was like half, almost half.
Forty-five to forty-seven percent.
Forty-five to forty-seven. Which, again, leads me to believe, whatever that number is, or whatever numbers we've got, we don't know which students elected not to take the test and which students elected to take the test. And we lose the top half of the curve, the bottom half of the curve, we don't, so we get a number, we don't know how it compares to last year's numbers. When all is said and done, New Jersey schools, including West Milford, paid substantial amounts a month to help Peterson pay the test, their test. We paid for that. And being in the software business and having delivered beta versions of software, usually you don't charge people for the junk. So at the end of the day, I'd have to say that the park tests that were administered this year were probably not particularly helpful to assess students or teachers. You know, we did it, we learned something in the process, but whatever numbers we get back, I don't know what they mean. So, is there any way that we can make some value out of that? And I've thought about this, I'm not going to introduce the motion at this meeting, but I think I will at the next meeting. I would like to get the raw test back with names removed, so that, for example, if we gave a test for English, we can look and see that the children didn't understand adverbs, or they didn't, so that we can actually look and see, you know, and maybe go back to individual classrooms. I know that in, I teach people how to officiate athletic events. And one of the things that we do is we give a test, and we get the test results back, and we can say, ah, you didn't understand that, you didn't understand. We know exactly what to address to improve understanding. It's probably not something that anybody wants to do, but I would like us to ask them for that information, so that we could actually get some value out of the test that we're giving this year. So I'm not making a motion at this meeting, but I would like to at the next meeting. It would sure be good to get some feedback about where our education is working and where it isn't, and what we need to focus on. That's it for legislative.
Thank you.
You done?
Yeah. That was enough of it.
Did you include the cost for technology, the park assessments and the...
Just cost line out statewide. We spend a lot, you got nothing.
Speaking of technology, I'm going to give you an update on it. Mr. El Taib's recommendation to begin the cable runs for the wireless system upgrade was brought up in the Technology Committee. He actually gave us a few scenarios, and the one scenario that he gave us that the Technology Committee recommended and brought to the Budget and Finance Committee, and we voted on this evening, was bundling the wiring installation costs, and the amount came in below the original budget. So, we did vote on it last, tonight, it's in this agenda, and the wiring is, for the wireless, is going to begin the upgrade, and at that E-rate discount. So, that's all I have for technology. And the West Milford Education Foundation, I don't know if you have anything for us, Mrs. O'Brien?
We'll be meeting in September. We'll be getting the process rocking and rolling to let the teachers know that the grants will, the application will be going to you guys and gals. So keep us busy. Please send in a lot of great ideas. We missed doing it last year, and we look forward to doing it this year to support our teachers, our faculty and staff.
Thank you.
I'll give more posts next month.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Roll call. Okay. And township Board of Education Joint Committee, Mr. Dever's not here, so there's nothing to report there. So does anybody have any old business?
Seeing none, move to close old business.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? New business? Does anybody have any new business?
I have new business. We are scheduled for a board meeting for August 18th, and the problem is that before I was rehired for this position, I have a conflict with the date, so I'm asking if possible if the board would be willing to move the meeting to the 25th, which is the following Tuesday.
Do we need, do we need to answer that right now?
I just want to put it out there, it's new business, so it's just something. We'll communicate, I just want to put it out there while I'm sitting here.
Okay.
So, send an email, I think that's going to be...
Yeah, and I'll send an email out to everybody, too, as a reminder, unless you just want to do it without me, so...
I think it's fine with me the twenty-fifth, I don't think that's...
No, take a look, I will remind you, I'll send that email.
Mrs. Francisco, did you say you were going to send the email out to all members?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Drew?
I am not going to introduce, again, a motion at this time, but I've been thinking about this for months. At our reorganization meeting, we discussed some of the bylaws and so on and so forth, and some particular changes. One of them is that, and I don't think people are really aware of this, that we're prevented in responding to public comments, asking additional questions, answering questions, and I would like to bring that up for consideration again. I think it, the public doesn't necessarily know that that's the case, and so, we wanted to... Unresponsive, like we're ignoring the issues brought to us by people who are brave enough to stand up in front of the cameras in this group. So, I am mentioning it, I'd like people to think about it, you're certainly welcome to vote either way, but I'm tired of sitting here, not responding to the public, and not answering their questions, and I personally would like to, at the next meeting, make a motion to change that.
Mr. Foodie?
I brought this up in the past as well, and I agree, and I'd like to put this into the Policy Committee with Mr. Babbitt, and see what we can do with the help of Mr. Novak and whoever else, and Joe, you can chime in as well.
I was going to say, that's the appropriate way to do it?
Yep.
Because to make a motion at the next meeting, you still have to have two readings...
You still have to have policy.
And a policy in place to have the readings on, so it really is the Policy Committee that should handle that, and then bring it to the Board for the vote.
And if we can, Marilyn, I don't, I don't know who's on, remember who, everybody on that committee. I thought Steve might have been on that, but he could sit in as an alternate, maybe, if he wants to, when we have those discussions.
Mrs. O'Brien, is it normal or usual for a board event member at a board event meeting to reply? I mean, I've been to multiple school districts, and I usually don't see board event members actually conversing.
It's not usual. Sometimes the Board President does reply, sometimes the Board President can recognize other board members, but in general, every board's bylaws say that there will be no response, that, it happens in every district, but it doesn't mean, you couldn't change it, it's just not common.
I mean, personally, I'm sorry, Jim, personally, I have no, I like to talk to people, so I actually don't mind that, I'm just concerned that somebody says something inappropriate, especially if, if something is on that borderline between, you know, it's a parent coming up and wanting to discuss a personal matter with his or her child, or that confidentiality, you know, you know, is that gray area, and I know that you guys over in policy would make sure that, you know, we would cover our bases in that manner.
I was going to say, a lot of times in those policies, the superintendent would handle the response for if somebody had a complaint on that, or let's say simulator or something like that, that's also an option to put in there.
Because we've done that in the past.
Which we won't respond on certain items, but there are ways to do it, but you're correct, it's not common.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Foodie?
Our, our policy and bylaws now doesn't preclude us from speaking out in public. What it does preclude us from is speaking for the whole board as a board member. So, in any policy that we would have, it would have to preclude with that statement that this is our opinion, we'll ask questions, we'll do whatever, and then Mr. Rashika or Ms. Schultz or Mr. Novak would then address it later on, if it's something of a nature... But, so, I mean, there are a lot of ways that we can work around this, but...
That's why it has to be in the policy.
It has to be, it really has to be in the policy, yep.
If I can, real quickly, I think, I like that idea, that's the best way to do it, to come up with some sort of format, where we might do that, I don't think it's something that I expect to do, but, you know, frequently, but there have been times when people have legitimate questions, that somehow or another, we should respond to. I think I would disagree with your characterization, Mr. Rizzelli, that it is rather uncommon to do it, but it happens. What, on the other hand, I think that there are many, many school boards within New Jersey who allow it, don't preclude it the way that we do, so, doesn't mean that we're going to run off and start making wild statements, but I, so I think that's a perfect way to do it, have the Policy Committee consider how to do it, and I really would like that, if we can think of some way to do it.
Right, and for those that don't preclude it, and there's a procedure in place, such as the Board President recognizes something, you know, a speaker, or something like that, and that's what's in the policy, so...
Or perhaps you can suggest the language that we might consider in the Policy Committee, instead of reinventing the wheel on that.
Okay.
Policy Committee normally meets before board meeting, correct? Is that, that's how we've done it in the past?
I did, when we have our committee meetings, I usually, if there's something for us to look at, when we get updates from the USMA, I will have a meeting with them prior to the actual start of the committee meetings.
Okay, so you would have, like it, yeah, I mean, in the past, we all, okay, in the past, though, my last time on the board, it was always done before I...
The chair, whatever.
Before, like, tonight's...
Right, yeah.
We would meet a half an hour, forty minutes before, that's what I remember.
What we've also done, though, in the past, is since the Education Committee meetings have been moved to a daytime slot, it frees up the committee night, so if we have a Policy Committee meeting, sometimes we put it in on Tuesday night.
Okay, because I, there is, I had gotten some policy from New Jersey School Boards with regards to legal bills and ways of, and I'd like to share that with the committee when we meet, so if we could do that next month, I would like to...
So, that would be, as you know, Mr. Babbitt is the chair, Mr. Dever's on that committee, Mr. Foodie are on that committee, and Mr. Drew is an alternate on that committee.
Okay.
Any other new business?
Seeing none, move to close new business.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, so...
Petitions and requests, we have another...
Oh, yeah, thank you. Forgot about that, thank you, Mr. Foodie. It's on the back of the other page, then. Yes.
Okay. Petitions and requests, petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for a period of thirty minutes, and then, time permitting, other petitions and requests, limited to five minutes per petitioner, will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Would anybody like to come up and speak?
Seeing none, move to close petitions and requests.
Need a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right. I believe we will be going into executive session, resolve that the board go into executive session at approximately eight forty. For the purpose of discussing negotiations, student matters, personnel, HIBs, the Evergamer Lake School Principal Position, and matters of attorney-client privilege, the executive session minutes will not be released until such time as the privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable. There will be action taken after executive session.
Need a second?
Need a second, please.
You got it, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Are we going to go into the other room for executive session?
We can go in there, choose.
In there?
The closet, first.
Closet, okay. Thank you, we're going into executive session.
Oh, okay.
Nine fifty-two. And we are on item number thirteen, under Education, that would be on page six of the agenda. Whereas in accordance with the requirements set forth in Public Law 2001-0, Chapter 122, the West Milford Board of Education has received results of HIB investigative reports on July 21, 2015. Therefore, be it resolved that the West Milford Board of Education approves issue of written decisions, one being unsubstantiated, one being substantiated.
You're affirming those.
And we're affirming those decisions in the superintendent's determination of these HIB investigations.
Need a second?
Yes, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
All right. Under Personnel, I'd like to move item thirty-six.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Schultz?
Yes.
I need a motion to adjourn at nine fifty-four.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine fifty-four P.M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned officially at nine fifty-four P.M. Thank you very much for attending this meeting, have a nice night, everybody.
You, too, thank you.
Thank you.